And we're doing the call-in, right? I like it like that. Pardon? That phone number? I have the phone number.
Oh, we are.
Yeah, I've got to repeat it. I thought about making it sign, just hold it up. Where is it on the agenda, please? Oh, I see it. It's on everyone. Got it. All right. What do you say, kiddos? Good evening, everyone. This is the June 4th, 2020, meeting of the Newport Beach Planning Commission. And it's a regular meeting. We have various items that we're going to discuss that may not be heard tonight and one that we will be hearing. With that, I have to announce that the audience, if you're out there watching, listening, I'll repeat this over and over, 949-270-8165. That's your lottery number to call in. All right. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. Sarah, make, would you mind? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
All commissioners are present this evening with the exception of Secretary Lowry, who's been excused, Vice Chair Wagen, who is running late, and Commissioner Kleiman.
Oh. Commissioner Kleiman is running late as well?
Um, she's running late, and I'm not sure she's going to...
I can't, I can't hear you very well.
She's running late, yes.
Thank you. All right. Public comment section. For those of you who had not been here, this is a period where you can have three minutes to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight that relates to City Planning Commission business and the planning of the city of Newport Beach. Remember the phone number. Where is my tech person? Do we have a taker in the back room? I don't see him on the screen, is why.
Try that again. Chair Ketting, members of the commission?
There you are. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jim Mosher, and I do have a non-agenda comment tonight. This is the time of year that appointments are made to the Planning Commission. As you know, the applications go through a city council screening committee, which is tasked with recommending two nominees for each appointment. This year is unusual in that with two incumbents up for reappointment, out of 10 applications, the screening committee was able to find only one that they felt was qualified enough to recommend the remainder of the council. So they had to ask the city council to waive the normal requirement of having two nominees for each position. My application actually was among those that was rejected as being totally unqualified, as it has been every year since 2011. So I conclude from that that being a planning commissioner is a skill that cannot be learned by observation, by attending your meetings, by reading staff reports, or our code. So I commend you on having that special skill to be a planning commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, Vice, I'm sorry, Chair, just for the record, Vice Chair Wagen and Commissioner Kleiman are now present.
Thank you. Welcome. All right. Requests for, do I hear anybody calling in for a public comment? No. Nobody in the big room? Very good. We're going to go to requests for continuances.
Mr. Chair, Deputy Community Development Director Campbell, we have two items on the agenda that we would like to, can deal with at this time. Agenda item number two, the AT&amp;T Small Cell Appeal Minor Use Permit. We want to pull this item off the calendar and not consider it this evening. We need to do some additional analysis and work on this item, so we would like this item to be removed from calendar. It would come back at a future date, and we would provide notice of that future meeting. So that's agenda item number two. Agenda item number three is also an AT&amp;T Small Cell Call for Review. And this item is, you know, the agenda item is here to provide notice to the public as to the call for review, which had been noticed. Unfortunately, the call for review came in a day late, and so the call for review is not valid, and it would actually not be heard tonight. And so this item, again, would be removed from calendar but not reviewed this evening as well. So we wanted to just make that announcement here for the record at the beginning of the meeting. So item number two, removed from calendar, and item number three would not be reviewed this evening. And that's it.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a point of...
Sure.
Mr. Campbell, on the item number three that was not accepted, I was the person who sent in a notice to the city asking for a call for review, and it appears I was a day late. So if you would, wouldn't mind just kind of letting the public know, you know, the process and how that went, I think I saw Mr. Mosher had made some comments related to it, and I just want to make sure that those get addressed, that I was the person who sent it in, but I was a day 15 instead of day 14. So just maybe explain the process.
Thank you. Is there, was that a question for you to explain the process, or?
I don't know if that's out of order, if that's appropriate time, or we're coming to that later.
Probably when we get to that one, when I say it's already approved. Fair enough. Otherwise, we're jumping and back and forth. Consent items. Minutes of May 7th. I see we have some editing. Who would like to address that? For the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve that with Mr. Mosher's edits. I'm not sure if he wants to discuss it or not, but I think we're...
He seldom does, but they're always pretty accurate on spelling.
Yes.
All right. We need a second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Oh. Whoop, got right by me. Woo! Forty-second delay. All right. You want to do it by hand and move on? Let's do a show of hands. All in favor of the motion for approval, including the addendum, I mean, cleanup items, by Mr. Mosher? Unanimous?
The motion carries 6-1 with Commissioner Rosine abstaining. Sorry, the motion carries...
Six?
5-1 with Commissioner Rosine abstaining, and Commissioner Lowry is absent.
All right. Was somebody absent? One, two, three, four, five, six. Mark? All right, I forgot. All right, very good. All right. We're going into the public hearing section right now, and guess what? Item number two, AT&amp;T Small Cell, SLC 0796 Appeal, PA 2019-111. Staff, you want to explain it again?
Sure. Mr. Chair, we are asking that this item be removed from calendar. We need additional time to evaluate this application, and so when this comes back at a future date, we will provide public notice of a future hearing at the Planning Commission. And we do need a vote to remove this from calendar.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion? Mr. Kleiman, second it. All in favor? Oh, we're not doing it. We're doing the old-fashioned way. Very good. I-tac.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, good. All right. Now we're rolling. Item number four. This is the Newport Airport Village, PA 2014-225. This is a handful, just because there's a lot of items we have to review and go over, and...
Mr. Chair, can, can I, sorry to interrupt, can we go through the item that was not approved? Or the other small cell?
Oh, I thought that was already pulled off. Number three, I beg your pardon.
I just wanted to, just so the public...
Hold on, let me introduce it, Commissioner. AT&amp;T Small Cell, SL 4653, call for review, PA 2019-115. I thought we had them together, but... We opened it?
Mr. Chair, this is on the agenda just for informational purposes. There's been no action for the commission, and this application is not before you this evening.
Okay. Information only. Very good. Now we're back to number four.
Just, just to address Mr. Mosher, he did send in a commentary, and I just want, so the public understands the process, 14 days, and I was day 15.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I do recall. So anytime the Planning Commission takes action on an item, actually, the zoning administrator as well, there is a 14-day appeal period or a call for review period. So within the 14 days after that action, a planning commissioner, a single planning commissioner, or a city, or a city council member can call an item for review, and it would go to the Planning Commission if it was from the zoning administrator or from the Planning Commission to the council, if it was a planning commission action. That same time period, any one member of the public can also file an appeal, but the 14-day period is pretty hard and fast, so that we have to have that appeal within that time period, and if it falls outside of that time period, you know, we can't accept it. Unfortunately, we didn't really see that date until much later, and we apologize for noticing this item. It never should have been on the Planning Commission's calendar to begin with. But again, the 14 days is kind of a hard and fast rule to protect the rights of the applicant.
Thank you. Back to item number four. I'll reintroduce it. It's Newport Airport Village, PA 2014-225. Site location, 4525 MacArthur Boulevard. Once again, for the listening and viewing public, area code 949-270-8165. You can call in at the appropriate time for comment. I was starting to say, this one has a general plan amendment, a zone code amendment, a planned community development plan, and a development agreement for legislative items tonight, not specific. With that, staff, would you like to introduce staff report?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, thank you. This is the Newport Airport Village Public Hearing, and as you indicated, there are several legislative amendments. What that really means is that we're changing the general plan and the zoning code. We're not actually approving a specific development proposal today. We're just basically establishing the policy framework and the regulations under which a future project would be developed at the project site. The air, the project site is located in the airport area. I'm trying to advance the slide here, hang on. Oh, there we go, it's advancing now. Okay, so the project site is in our airport area. There's a vicinity map here. It's basically located at the corner of MacArthur and Campus, right near John Wayne Airport. The project site is about 16 acres. It's highlighted here in yellow on the slide, again, John Wayne Airport to the northwest. We have a variety of land uses in the vicinity, consisting of office, retail, hotel, car wash, restaurants. Within the project site, there's other uses, car rental facilities, service facilities, offices, restaurants, retail, and the like. Again, the, the site is 16.46 acres located in the airport area. The existing general plan and zoning allows a .5 FAR for commercial uses, commercial and office uses. It actually also provides a .75 FAR, a much higher intensity, for warehouse uses. And that's within the existing general plan, and I'll describe that a little bit more in detail in a moment. As I said, the existing uses, retail service, restaurants, offices, medical, and the vehicle rental facilities. So before you tonight, again, are several legislative actions, first being a general plan amendment. The general plan currently shows this property as Airport Office, or AO. The applicant is requesting it be redesignated to M U H 2, which is Mixed Use Horizontal 2, and that would allow for residential use. There are two general plan policies the applicant is seeking waivers for, and I'll get into those in a moment. The Charter Section 423, we, we use that section, it's more, also known as Green Light Initiative. When a, when a general plan amendment has increases in traffic units or square footage above certain thresholds, a vote of the electorate might be required. But in this particular case, there is no increase in square footage, no increase in housing units, and therefore no increases in traffic above what the general plan currently provides, so there will be no vote of the electorate if this project were to be approved. Again, I'll go into a little more detail in that moment. Now, the zoning, it is zoned OA, which is also Airport Office. We're going to zone it Planned Community, and there is a new Planned Development Plan, which is also, provides the zoning for the property. There is a development agreement also with this project site that's required by the municipal code, and that provides for vested rights to develop the project, as well as provides public benefits to the community. So again, the general plan, Airport Office to Mixed Use Residential, and so the floor area ratio currently would allow for up to 358,000 square feet of office and commercial uses, as well as vehicle rental facilities and the like. And there's, so this is actually what the current general plan talks about. These are supportive uses for John Wayne Airport, professional offices, aviation, retail, automotive rentals, sales and services, and hotels, and the like. The zoning is complementary. In fact, what you'll notice is that the language is actually very, almost identical in terms of what's there today. So these land uses that are up there today would also be allowable under the designation that is being requested today. Back to the project a little bit. Again, there isn't a specific development that would occur, but based on what the Planned Community Development Plan would afford, the following would be allowed, commercial floor area up to 297,000 square feet. And the 61,000 square foot difference there would actually be removed from the general plan, and then that would make way for the 329 multi-unit residential units. I'm calling them base units purposefully because this is also a density bonus project that's being requested, and that's why you see affordable housing requirement. The applicant is proposing that they would be, that they would deliver to the city 5% of the 329 units for very low, 10% for low, or 10% for moderate income. That would be the minimum requirement that they would have to provide. So in addition to the 329 multi-unit units, the applicant could ask for up to 35% density bonus, which would be up to an additional 115 units, making the total project site supporting up to 444 units. Now, if you take the full 35% density bonus, you'd actually have to provide affordable units in higher percentages than what you see here today. And the density bonus law of the city, as well as the state, would regulate that. So the, the Planned Community Development Plan, or the PCDP, as you see on the screen, provides those development standards, height limits, parking, land use regulations, as well as the future review process. It also includes design guidelines that we would expect a future developer to adhere to. So now to the future, or to the proposed general plan designation, M U H 2. And so what's on the screen here, I know there's a lot of words there, but what this designation allows for, it is specific to the airport area, and I'll show you a map of where that covers in a moment. And so this is the existing general plan. It does allow for multifamily, residential, regional office, vehicle, vertical mixed-use buildings, industrial hotel rooms, and ancillary neighborhood commercial uses. So the uses of the AO zone and the existing uses that are out there today would be allowable under this designation. What you see there highlighted is what the residential component for this designation is, up to 2,200 units, some of which are replacing existing retail, and that's why the project site would actually be reduced by 61,000 square feet to make way for the 329 units. There's an additional residential allocation of 550 units developed as infill, but those are allocated for a different portion of the airport area and not the project site. And so the conversion, the 61,900 square feet equals the 329 dwelling units, and that's basically 50 dwelling units per acre on that site. It's also trip neutral, so what the city did back in 2007 is develop these trip conversion ratios, where you, commercial, industrial, and office uses, certain square footage of that would then equate to a certain number of residential units. And so we've gone through that city adopted process to develop the 329 units and the conversion and the removal of the 61,926 square feet. So the density bonus units are not part of that calculation. Density bonus can occur at any property in town that's designated for residential use. You can get up to 35%, and the general plan does not regulate those units at all. Moving forward. So this is a table that's in the staff report. This is just informational. It's to, to help explain where the 2,200 units of the general plan are currently residing, if you will. We have approved the Uptown Newport Project, which has taken advantage of some of the replacement units. They took down an apartment, I'm sorry, an office building, and they will be taking down the industrial facility to make way for units. They also got some of the additive units that I also mentioned. And the second project we've approved is the Newport Crossings Projects. That's a 350-unit project. And then the Coal Center Residence is there. That is not an entitled project, but it's just there, it's under review. We're working on the application now, and that's another 260 units. They're actually proposing a density bonus in that project as well, so there'll actually be a little bit more than that, it'll be about 312 units, if my memory serves. So the, the proposed Newport Airport Village project is there, the last line, 329 units would be those replacement units with 115 potential units for maximum yield of 444. Now, they wouldn't have to build all 1444, they could build something less than that, but they would definitely be doing a density bonus project, and so there will be some affordable component in there, as I indicated. So the point of this slide is really to show that there are adequate units that are currently in the general plan. And so the point I want to make here is that, you know, the project applicant is not asking for an additional units above and beyond what the current general plan already allows. So this is the land use map for the airport area. The salmon color is the M U H 2. The project site is up, is right here, the MU, it's Aport, I'm sorry, AO right now, in the orange color. And simply what we're doing with this application would be to redesignate it for M U H 2 and not add any additional intensity, commercial or residential, to the general plan. It just provides another potential site for housing that we've already planned for in the airport area at this particular site. One other change to the general plan, we would be adding an anomaly location. We do have a table in the general plan that has 85 locations right now, and they actually are shown on the map with those numbers, 3, 10, 12, 11. We would add a number here called 86, and it would basically say, you know, obviously it's designated M U H 2, that's the proposal. Non-residential development would be limited to 297,000 and change, and then you see the 329 units. Again, that's not reflective of density bonus units, because those could be developed at any site in town. And moving forward to zoning, so right now it is OA for the Airport Office zoning district, and we would change that to Planned Community. And then with that, we would come up with a Planned Community Development Plan, and that is in your packet. It's one of the exhibits to the resolution, and this Planned Community Development Plan, again, establishes the zoning regulations for the site. So to summarize what's in there, we've got Planning Area 1 and Planning Area 2. Planning Area 1 is where the housing would go, and Planning Area 2 is where the non-residential commercial redevelopment would occur over time. The first phase would be the residential component, and then we would have a future subsequent construction on Planning Area 2, again, non-residential. Again, this is a summary table of what's in the, the Planned Community Plan. It does limit the floor area, it does have dwelling unit caps, it has setback standards. We've got five-foot setbacks to the side rear property lines and a 10- and 20-foot setback to the streets. The height limit for the, for the Planning Area Number 1 is actually 85 feet, and that would allow for, obviously, a higher building. I will point out that that height limit, given the proximity to the airport, has been reviewed by the FAA, and they have received an indication that it would not be a threat to air navigation. And so then the height limit for the Planning Area 2 would be 37 feet. Now, that is consistent with the existing regulations. Parking would be per the zoning code. I do want to point out with the density bonus project, there is built-in relief for zone, for parking, actually, parking is done at a lesser standard than it would otherwise be, and that's pursuant to state law. There would be architectural design criteria that are in the, in the, in the document, they are guidelines, and they would be guiding a future development, a developer, in terms of the design, and we would be reviewing it against those designs. The site development review process would be used, and that site development review is a process that's currently in the zoning code. And so it, it sets up a situation where small projects can be reviewed by staff, medium-sized projects reviewed by the zoning administrator at a public hearing, and then large projects would be going to the Planning Commission for a notice public hearing. So that the residential component and large office buildings would definitely be coming to the Planning Commission. Airport policy. So I'm going to show you a slide here in a moment of various areas that we definitely needed to avoid. The high noise contour, 65 dBACNL, and that's a 24-hour average noise, and housing in the 65 or above is not compatible, and the PC does not allow for residential in that area. There's also a safety zone 3, in that high-density housing is not compatible with that zone either, and we're avoiding that zone as well. There is Airport Land Use Commission review required because the state law requires a general plan amendment or a code amendment or a height change within an airport land use plan area. It must go to them for their review, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a moment. So, so this is a map of the project site, again, the 16 acres in yellow. The hatched area is the area that is outside the 65 CNEL, which is basically east of that red line that you see there. And the green line that you see there is the safety zone 3, and so within that, residential would not be allowed as well. So the residential units would be in that area. Now, there will be some residential areas, not residential units per se, but parking and other amenity space that might also be in that area up towards Campus, but residential units will not be in that area. So based on the location of the residential units and our reading of the airport environs' land use plan, we feel that it is consistent with that land use plan. Now, there, as indicated, the Airport Land Use Commission does review the project, and they will review it after the Planning Commission looks at it and before the city council. So moving on, we've got the, this is the conceptual plan that the applicant has provided, and what, what you'll see is the, kind of the yellow areas or the orange areas is where the residential component would be. They're looking to do a small retail component up on MacArthur Boulevard. Parking would be mostly contained within the building or under the building. And then you see the purple buildings, and that's the non-residential component that would over time replace the existing non-residential buildings and/or the vehicle service uses that are there as well. So this is in the planned community text, it is conceptual, but based on the constraints of the airport, the high noise contour and the safety zone, the residential component would be basically located precisely where you see it. Again, it's a concept. I want to touch upon a couple of policies that the applicant is requesting a waiver for. We have Land Use Policy 615-7, which talks to the overall density and housing types. Talks to a minimum density and a maximum... Talks to a minimum density and a maximum density based on the average over the total residential village. The issue we have here is that they've got a very large village, it's sixteen acres. And what they're proposing, the three-hundred-and-twenty-nine units plus the density bonus, doesn't meet those density criteria. And so what we're suggesting is that, based on the constraints that are in the airport area, we can waive this policy because it is actually a density bonus project. When you look at the density bonus law in our municipal code, we must provide relief to projects where they're infeasible when they're building a density bonus, which also includes affordable housing. So there are some mandatory relief that we must provide if we find that those constraints and the applicability of these regulations and policies preclude or make it infeasible to build the project. You know, in the staff report, we go through that analysis. We do believe that this would be applicable. And, you know, at the end of the day, when you look at the net acreage, the building on the net acreage, the six acres where the residential component would be, we end up with a project that's actually within the density range that's prescribed by the general plan. So we're not too far off. And so in staff's recommendation, we should waive this policy. Now, given the fact, I have said that this would be a mandatory waiver, and no way does that remove the city's discretion on this project. This is a general plan amendment. The city has full discretion to say no to this project if we feel that it's not appropriate for the community. So just because of the density bonus, you know, it really doesn't become mandatory until we actually change the zoning and the general plan for this project. But I wanted to point out that we do have complete discretion to do with this project as the city chooses. And again, there's the Government Code section here that I'm referencing that makes, you know, prohibits us from applying a development standard that has the effect of physically precluding construction of a density bonus project. So again, you know, because of this, we're recommending that, you know, if we choose to develop, change the general plan and zoning, we would apply this to this, we would waive the policy for density. The second policy waiver is Land Use Policy six fifteen seven. And I'm going to show you what that act, oh. Okay, this actually was dealing with the limitations on the project site that we feel support finding the, finding that the waiver would be appropriate in this case. Second policy is Neighborhood Parks. Policy six fifteen thirteen basically requires a park. Now, this policy is specific to the airport area. It requires that parks be provided in the airport area, but it also provides that the city can waive the requirement with the payment of an in-lu fee. So this is the policy itself. I know there's a lot of words there. I highlighted the operative one that the applicant is seeking, where the policy itself says that we can waive this requirement if it's demonstrated that the development parcels are too small to feasibly accommodate the park or inappropriately located to serve the needs of local residents and when an in-lu fee is paid. So the applicant is proposing to pay the in-lu fee and requesting the waiver. And what we're suggesting is that it may be inappropriate to put a one-acre public park up in the airport area. There is a lack of available space outside the sixty-five CNEL and the safety zone. It would actually take away area for the residential project as well, and that would also play into potentially the infeasibility of doing a density bonus project. You know, again, this is nearby also airport support uses and the limited future residences in the area. So we feel that there is adequate potential justification to waive this policy. Now, whether the council waives the policy, the park dedication requirement of the policy or not, we're still consistent with the policy either way because, you know, either the policy is enforced and then a park is developed or the policy, or the dedication is waived, and they pay an in-lu fee, and the applicant is requesting that in-lu fee. Staff is recommending that we waive this policy based on the constraints of that airport area, as I've indicated. Moving forward to the Development Agreement. The term is fifteen years for residential and twenty years for non-residential. So the applicant would have the vested right to develop the project as pursuant to the Planned Community Development Plan and the general plan for those time periods. We've negotiated a public benefit fee of six million dollars paid in three installments, and that's outlined in the agreement itself. It also includes the general plan policy waiver of the park fee, and that would be two-point-five million dollars for a one-acre park. And the one-acre park is what the policy requires. And the last item on the list there is a public safety fee of one million dollars for fire, life, safety, staffing, services, and equipment. So those are the public benefits, and then the term of the agreement. So the Sequor Review. So we have done California Environmental Quality Act review. We've prepared an addendum to two EIRs, and that was a pretty challenging effort. But what we've found is that, you know, the general plan in two thousand and six has this mixed-use designation for the airport area, has twenty-two hundred units, and it has non-residential development. It's already built right in. The amendment that we're looking at today is simply just to expand the footprint of that and allow for additional sites to be considered within the existing policy framework. So in reality, we're not increasing any development potential. We're just changing the location where it could occur. And so we felt that this project was really well within what was evaluated within the two thousand and six General Plan Program EIR. Now, in two thousand and fourteen, we did a land use element amendment, and that amendment had a variety of changes all over town and specifically included this project. However, at that time, this project was going to be additive to the general plan, meaning the three-hundred-and-twenty-nine units requested today was above and beyond the twenty-two hundred that was already afforded in the general plan. Additionally, it asked for additional office development, which was a far higher development intensity than what's being asked for today. And so we looked at that EIR and the analysis in that EIR to evaluate whether or not this project would have any additional impacts above and beyond what was predicted. And the finding of that analysis, it is a fairly lengthy document, was that there are no new impacts identified, and everything that we might expect from an environmental impact has already been identified and addressed in those prior documents. So we do have Joanne Headfield of Placeworks here to ask her any questions about the environmental review. We feel confident that the analysis in the document is adequate for this project and that we can move forward. So what's next? Obviously, we have a public hearing to conclude tonight, and if the Planning Commission chooses to take the recommended actions, which is to adopt a resolution, to pass forward a recommendation for approval to the council, we would go to the Airport Land Use Commission in July. And then they would have a public hearing. And they, what they're looking to do is to make a determination of whether the project is consistent or not with the airport environs land use plan. Now, as I've indicated in my presentation in the staff report, staff believes that this is completely consistent with that plan. That being said, the Airport Land Use Commission makes that decision. If they make a decision that it is consistent, then we proceed forward to the City Council fairly straight away. If they find it inconsistent, then there's a process that we would likely go through where the City Council could choose to override that determination. So there is a back and forth and a notice of intent to do that that we would send. Again, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves here. We don't know that they're going to do that. But past actions of a similar nature, actually with housing farther away from the airport, the Airport Land Use Commission has taken similar actions to find it inconsistent. So we kind of anticipate it might occur. That being said, that would be the next steps going forward. Airport Land Use Commission in July, and then City Council after that. And so I am done with my presentation. Now, I've been working with Greg Ramirez on this project for some time. Greg has done all the heavy lifting on this project. He is available here in the audience. So if we get any technical questions that I can't handle, he'll take them. And then, obviously, environmental questions, I will turn that over to Joanne Headfield of Placeworks, who's also available. So with that, I'm going to conclude my remarks. The applicant is available. They are on the Zoom platform, and they want to make a presentation as well.
All right. Thank you. Very, very concise presentation, considering all the pages we had to read. I'd like to go to staff, a couple of questions. I don't want to dominate, but park waiver fee. It seems to have already been negotiated? Or is that a standard per acre fee? How is that calculated?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. The park value of park land was established by the City Council in two thousand and seven after doing several appraisals. So by resolution, I don't remember the exact number of it, but it was two thousand and seven, the council established two-and-a-half million dollars an acre. And so we just basically used that as our point of reference. And so the general plan requires a one-acre public park to be developed. So we're asking that they pay two-point-five million, and that's what the applicant has agreed to.
Then, in that same vein, the Development Agreement, has that been outlined or negotiated or in the works, or they're waiting for this commission to determine?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, staff has been working with the applicant negotiating this Development Agreement. So that is attached to your resolution. All the terms are in there. It is full and complete. You know, the public benefits that are identified in here are these financial terms, which is just a negotiated benefit, if you will, to the community in exchange for the vested rights to develop over the term of the agreement. Obviously, the City Council will look at that. The Planning Commission can offer comments on this. But, you know, again, it's what we feel that the developers agreed to these terms. Hopefully, they'll be on the record here in a moment to do that. And the applicant is here. Mr. Strater is in the community room, ready to provide his presentation, and then their legal counsel is available by Zoom as well.
All right. I'll yield to commissioners, and I'll come back with a few more. Yes?
Question about the benefit fees that have been negotiated in the Development Agreement. Are there other impact fees that the applicant will also be required to pay when building permits are pulled or whatever the trigger is for those fees?
Yes, the primary one is the traffic fair share fee. So whatever net increase in traffic that would be afforded, there is a fee that's currently adopted by ordinance. They would be paying that fee. There are the transportation corridor fees. All fees that a project would otherwise have to pay, they have to pay. So there is no other relief here. So the excise tax on any future development, they have to pay that as well, so.
So these fees are essentially above and beyond what would normally be required in the impact fees?
That's correct.
Okay.
If I can just add, they're essentially non-statutory fees that are incorporated in there.
Okay. And then I have one other question. With respect to the financial analysis that was done, it was one of the last attachments in our package here. It basically shows that build out this project would cost the city six-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars a year to provide services for. And then it notes in the conclusion that, you know, there still is a positive fiscal impact to the general fund. Just curious, because there weren't any tables that, you know, outlined the general fund. And I guess I'm just curious how the city, you know, plans to fund a project that comes at a cost to the city.
Thank you for those questions. Yes, we did this analysis because the General Plan Implementation Program requires it to be done for general plan amendments for major development projects. And the model is fairly simplistic. It looks at our budgeting based upon different land uses. So when you change land uses, it has a potential fiscal effect. And residential, in this case, is actually one that actually costs the city more to service than other uses that might generate other forms of tax revenue. Retail being one. And so when you look at this project, there would be a net impact, meaning it will, over time, cost the city more to service this project site than it would. Now, how we would fund that is the increment of taxes that would come in, property taxes principally for this project site. But in the conclusion, what we're also indicating here is that, because this project is taking advantage of the existing conversion that's happening in the airport area that the plan is, that the general plan anticipates, you know, what they're doing is just implementing the plan that we've already, in essence, planned for. We've already anticipated these changes on these small project scales. But when you look at the overall build out of the general plan, it did have a net positive impact. So as the general plan is built out, we would start to see revenues start to increase above and beyond these small project decreases that we've already planned for. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. And not to go too far into the weeds on that, you know, is there ever, is there ever a point, though, with the general fund where, you know, if you are to build out these more, you know, costly uses such as residential, that the general fund would actually be negative? I mean, I don't think that's the case. You know, you're stating it's twenty-one-point-seven million per year at a positive fiscal impact, but.
Yeah, I mean, that build out is the results of the full build out of the general plan as we envisioned it and approved it in two thousand and six. Is there a point within which, you know, development stops occurring? You know, and we've done all the residential, but we haven't done the commercial, and we could be, end up in kind of a negative situation? I'm not sure that situation would ultimately occur. You know, obviously, we'll have to make some adjustments if we do find that our service needs are higher, and that's part of why we negotiate these development impact fees through the Development Agreement. That public safety fee will help us provide enhanced fire services to the airport area, and the other fees will go to providing parks and what have you. So the Development Agreement is another vehicle within which we make up some of that difference.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wyer?
Yeah, I just had some general RENA kind of questions. So this would be applied to the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-nine cycle as long as it was built and approved as a project by, during that time. But there's forty-eight-hundred or so units that we must build in the city. That's kind of what RENA is saying, is that?
Juan? Commissioner Wyer, what I would say is our RENA is really a planning target, not a construction target. So in our planning, in our zoning, in our general plan, we have to, we will be, we will need to provide for approximately forty-eight-hundred-and-thirty-two units. That's our draft number now. We are going to appeal that number. So it could change, but we're operating using that number. So if we approve this project tonight, it would become an opportunity site that we can include in our housing element going forward, in our next housing element. And so this would be, would count towards against that forty-eight-hundred unit requirement to plan for. So when we look at that number today and look at the definitions of what a housing opportunity site is, we don't have enough sites that I can readily identify. And in order for us to provide those in our housing element going forward, if they're not vacant sites, we don't have any vacant sites, honestly. They're underutilized. And as such, we have to provide substantial evidence that it's going to change land use. Now, this project approval with the applicants and the ownerships, obviously, pursuing this application, we clearly have substantial evidence that we're going to have a change in land use over the next eight years. So it would clearly be qualified as a housing opportunity site going forward. And so that's one of the reasons we're recommending approval of the project, is that it helps us further our housing goals.
That's great. So, but what RENA kind of is saying as of now, if everything passed and the appeal that we're trying to lodge fails, fourteen-hundred or so have to be very low income. Nine-hundred or so have to be really low. Thousand or so have to be moderate, and fourteen-hundred or so have to be above moderate. So if, to get the density bonus, you have to do five percent for very low and ten percent to low or moderate? Is that, do I have that right? Or is that just what the applicant's proposing in this? Or is that?
Yes. Standard, yeah. The applicant is proposing that they would construct three-hundred-and-twenty-nine base units, and then they would get a density bonus of twenty percent. And that would require that they either build five percent very low housing, and that's seventeen units, and, or ten percent very low, which is, what, thirty-one units? And then, or thirty-two units, sorry? If I do my math, I'm sorry, I don't have the table in front of me. And the same would be for moderate. So if you're suggesting that the inclusionary percentages don't really add up to our RENA, and I think that's where you're going with that comment. You're absolutely right. I think as we go forward with creating a new housing element, we're going to need to develop tools that future projects include more affordable housing in them.
So that's a discussion that's really not fixable until that comes down the road, when the city has to really go with that. So the applicant isn't really, I wouldn't say jumping the gun, but he's there in a position to propose this without really us having to take that item up. I mean, we're going to have to take it up at some point, but it shouldn't really fall on them, this number. Because if you were to only add this ten percent, I mean, Newport only has forty thousand homes. If you were to do the math, you would need to come up with another forty thousand homes and double the size of the population of the city of Newport just to accommodate what RENA is saying if we were using our current status. So I think that's something we're going to have to look at in the future. But I'm not throwing that on that. So I think that's something we're going to have to look at in the future, but I'm, I'm not throwing that, that on that applicant. That's mostly just for us to know we're going to have to discuss or the city council's going to have to discuss in, in the future.
Thank you. Yes, Curtis.
Jim, so just so I want to make sure that I'm tracking properly, the 329 base units, the applicant, or then it is then optional for them to look for the density increase after that? Is, is that, am I tracking that right?
Well, it, it, it would be, it won't be optional in this particular case because we're, we would be granting them a, a waiver or concession because it is a, an affordable housing project, a density bonus project. So it would become mandatory. And in the, in the planning community text, that there is a mandate that they provide 5% for very low, 10% for low, or 10% for moderate income. Um, now, they could, and that's with a 20% density bonus, and that doesn't get you to the 444 total. They could come in and ask for a, a maximum of 35%, which gets you to the 444. Now, if they did that, they would actually be provided, they would have to provide more affordable units than those minimums that you see in the planning community texts, those percentages I cited. So there is some flexibility in there, but they must provide an affordable housing project.
So I guess my follow-up question to that, so if we were to, when we look at, at waiving LU 615.7, and that would be, uh, and that's the relief for the, the added units, is it an unintended consequence that somebody could, we would, we would go ahead and waive this, but then they would not have to build this in the future?
Well, i- in this case, since we are providing the waiver of the policy, we can only do that if it is, i- it would only be mandatory to do this if it were a density bonus project. So if we're going to waive it, they have to do, they have to have a dense, um, I'm sorry, they have to have an affordable component in a future project. So it becomes mandatory if we approve it the way that it's structured today. They couldn't come back in the future and say, hey, no, we're not going to do the affordable component. In that, in that case, you know, they're, they would be inconsistent with this policy. The waiver wouldn't be applicable. Um, and then you'd have to come in and maybe reapprove the project or do some other change to the general plan to, to allow a non-affor- a, a project without affordable housing in it.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Kleinman?
Over here in the cheap seats, I thought you'd have an easier time seeing me. Okay, um, a couple of questions. The first one being, can you hear me? Yes, no? Yes. Um, the in-lu park fee, is that, does that get earmarked specifically then for uses related to parks throughout the city? In other words, not lumped in with?
Commissioner Kleinman, the, the, the park in lieu money would go to a fund that is set up for this park service area. It's a little bit bigger than the airport area. It extends down to the back bay, and so it would go into that account. Now, the city council does have a policy that they've adopted that allows them a little greater flexibility to, to apply these funds to a community-wide park that has been established, uh, that if, that, uh, that services the entire community. So, A, it would go into a fund for this service area that's nearby, that, that this project is within, but the council does retain flexibility to spend it for large community parks.
And then, I, I know it's still premature and early on in the general plan update process, but, um, and I've asked this before, but in terms of general conversations being had, is it safe to say, um, that the trend or that the discussion seems to be centering around, um, trying to meet the Rena numbers in this airport area? That that seems to be the will of, of the residents, that they would like to see if we are having to do higher density, for example, or, um, you know, the other components of this type of project, they would like it to be in the airport area and that that would be the concentration in terms of where we're looking at the general plan update and where in the city we're going to somehow meet the numbers as Commissioner Wyman addressed earlier.
It's a very good question, and, and we've been going through, uh, a process with the general plan update. We conducted, uh, a variety of, of community meetings in each council member's district. And I'll kind of summarize what we learned through that process, and that is, um, you know, people want to protect their own neighborhoods. Um, you know, the airport area is definitely a, an area that the current general plan has opportunity sites in. And I think the community would like to see them, the, the units in this area, the airport area, principally because it helps protect their own neighborhoods. Um, the, the Newport Center area is another opportunities, uh, area. There's a lot of infrastructure there and it probably could, uh, stand for some additional units there. Um, and then, uh, Bain and Ranch was another area that people are looking toward, uh, providing housing on in some balance with the environmental preservation. So that's kind of the general theme that we're seeing there. Now, a- and, and again, the, the committee that the council is, uh, set up will start meeting here in July. July 1st, I believe, is our first meeting. Um, and, and that, we're, we're looking to try to come up with a plan that complies with what the Rena is, and that's the purpose of that committee. And, and so there'd be additional dialogue through that committee and additional outreach to the community, which might refine kind of that summary, uh, of areas. So there may be other opportunities that might come about.
Great, thank you. And then just my last question, if you could go over for the education of the commission and for the public, uh, if the project were to be approved here and then ALUC and then, um, at the council level, what happens then when each of these individual components or projects comes before? Like, it has to still go through additional review, right? So.
Yep, excuse me. A very good question. Um, so we, we conclude this public hearing and, and the commission can take an action to recommend approval if they choose to or continue it and take it up at another meeting. But once we get through the planning commission, um, if it is a recommendation of approval, we would go to the Airport Land Use Commission for their review. It is a public hearing. Um, we anticipate that they might find the project inconsistent with the land use plan, despite the fact that it's consistent with the land use plan. They, they've taken actions like that. Uh, what that actually does is it sets up a scenario that should the council want to approve this, they would have to override that decision. Now, they can do so by announcing that intent, uh, adopting a resolution of intent to do so, transmitting that to the co- uh, the Airport Land Use Commission, and then we wait 45 days. And then we come back and have a public hearing with the city council. Um, and if the, if, uh, what is it, three fifths of the city council agree, then we can override that decision and approve the project. And again, that's up to the council if they choose to do so. So once that's done, um, you know, at that point in time, they would, uh, they would have a, a project. We would sign the development agreement, you know, barring any litigation, obviously. Uh, we'd sign the development agreement and then the future developer and the property owner would negotiate a, a land transaction. And then we would, then they would design a project and would come back to the city. And that would be through the Site Development Review Project. And we anticipate Phase 1, the residential component, would be the first phase. And then that would come back as a site development review, be a public hearing by the planning commission for that project. And we would be evaluating that project consistent with the planned, community development plan that is before you today. Um, and then, um, and we would be doing a traffic analysis pursuant to the traffic phasing ordinance. And, um, you know, then, then, then we would approve that project if it met all those criteria, um, and then go from there. And then construction would occur.
Great. Just wanted to outline that for everyone to understand that this won't be the last time, even if it's approved here, that we would see, you know, each of these elements individually, et cetera. Thank you. Those were all my-
Commissioner Rosin, you have a comment, question?
Just to go back, to touch on the affordable unit. And s- my, my question is, is that this is going to come back to us in a second time, like we just discussed, in terms of an actual project. And so at that point in time, the applicant will have to come back and say, this is the affordable component that they're proposing at that time. And that's when we'll see that, whether it's the 35% maximum or, but, but we'll come back and we'll hear that at, in its final form.
Yeah, Commissioner Rosin, that's, uh, precisely correct. Um, on page, handwritten page 76 or page 11 of the Plan, Community Plan, uh, Development Plan, is the affordable requirements that are built in under subsection nine. And in there is an, uh, affordable housing implementation plan that's prepared. And that's where it outlines precisely what the project is. Is it a 35% density bonus that has more affordable units in it than what the minimum is? Or is it, or is it at the minimum? It'll be somewhere in between. They'll indicate whether it's a very low income target, uh, population, or a low income target, or a moderate income, or some variant of, or combination thereof. And then they'll explain how the, those units would be dispersed throughout the project. And there are requirements in our density bonus provisions in state law as well as our municipal code. So all that gets outlined at that point in time. The planning commission gets to see it.
And then just out of curiosity, isn't there a limit to the amount of times that we could do a general plan amendment per year?
I believe it's five.
Five, okay. Thank you.
All right. Chair has a couple more as a follow-up. Have you had, has the city had any discussions with the airport land use on this preliminarily? And have they given you any indication?
We have. Um, they did provide a letter at the study session, which was in your packet at that time. Um, I think they were showing, uh, suggesting that we locate any residential component outside of the 65 CNEL and outside of the, um, uh, Safety Zone 3, which the project adheres to. Um, and I know we had a conversation with the executive director about the processing going forward, but beyond that, we haven't had any detailed discussions.
All right. And, and since we're, this property is diagonally across from Irvine, city of Irvine, office buildings and the like. Have they, do they, they have a right to comment on this?
Absolutely. Uh, but we have not received any comments from the city of Irvine.
Or the county of Orange itself, not the airport?
We got a, we got a letter from John Wayne Airport, which is a, a component of the county of Orange. Um, they expressed concern about traffic at the, at, on campus. Basically, um, you know, there is an entrance, obviously, right there, a left turn from, uh, from campus and a right turn from campus into the airport. So they were concerned about traffic volumes there. And, you know, within the addendum, we did evaluate traffic. Uh, the traffic engineer is here if you have any questions about traffic, but, uh, we didn't feel that the traffic volumes there really, um, would result any specific, um, impacts. Um, obviously, the precise location of a future driveway is not known today, but it would be evaluated for safety, um, at that time.
Very good. Uh, hearing and seeing no other hands go up for comments from the commissioners, we need to do, um, ex parte communication. Mr. Rosin?
I visited the site and I did have a conversation with the applicant's agent.
Okay.
I too spoke with the applicant's consultant.
Thor?
I had text communication with the applicant's consultant.
I have had none.
Just text communication with the applicant's consultant.
I spoke with applicant's consultant if, and he asked if I had any questions, uh, on, on the project that were different from any on the study session. And I also spoke to a member of the public, uh, in regards to, uh, questions we might have had on Rena allocation.
All right. It's, at this time, we open the public hearing. So, um, once again, I will put out the phone number for those in the viewing community.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we, we, the applicant does have a, a brief presentation.
I just want to let him know.
Okay.
I've been, I, I realize that. I just want to let the public know again. All right. Staff, let's let the applicant give us their song of dance.
Mr. Chairman, Patrick Strater from the, uh, community room. And, uh, Mr. Campbell, thank you so much for an incredibly comprehensive presentation. Uh, I don't think we need to run our presentation because it is largely, uh, what was presented during the study session. So I'm just going to speak very briefly about the history of this project, the opportunity, uh, for the city of Newport Beach, and then answer any questions that the commission may have. So briefly, uh, I'm Patrick Strater with Star Point Ventures. Uh, represent John Saunders, the owner of the acreage that's been assembled in this application. Mr. Saunders has been pursuing some form of this application since well before the 2006 general plan amendment, which the city of Newport Beach, uh, approved and the voters subsequently voted and approved. Uh, Mr. Saunders was a participant in the committee that, uh, participated to put that 2006 general plan amendment together and set the stage for where we are here this evening with the creation of the airport opportunity area with the cloud and the replacement units and the underlying EIR. So fast forward, if you would, till about 2013, when the city began undergoing, uh, a land use element update to the general plan once again. And at that point, uh, having worked on projects similar to this, uh, in other jurisdictions and just around the corner and several other in Newport, uh, I got together with Mr. Saunders and, uh, some other, uh, planners and we put together a plan to come and participate in the city's land use element update committee. And after about eight or nine meetings of the, uh, the committee that had been impaneled to put together recommendations to the city council for that 2014 general plan update, um, we spoke continually of the need for the window to Newport Beach as people enter from John Wayne Airport to really be enhanced and for the city to incentivize, uh, the owners of the property to enhance that area as a window to the city. And also, um, I remember throughout the process, we asked about, um, or we, we spoke of aspirational zoning. And I do a lot of land use and a lot of it comes down to questions about material boards and, uh, looking at how many plants are here and there. This is truly an aspirational project and the process really is built upon that. And it is so difficult, uh, to go through a process like this with all of the various challenges that it, it has necessitated how this is in front of you this evening. And we think it's a very graceful solution to a very complex issue. That complex issue is, in the Newport Beach airport area, the minimum site sizes are 10 acres. And there are other requirements, uh, as Mr. Campbell spoke, with the constraints that overlay from the airport, from other areas, left, right, across every single parcel. So the ability for the city of Newport Beach to provide much-needed housing during our housing crisis and to comply with the Rena requirements is fairly limited in terms of the numbers of opportunity sites. I previously was involved in another site in the airport area that attempted to go through the process. And because of a fractionalized ownership within that particular, uh, project, it's impossible. There are several owners of individual buildings that will never be put back together. And it's very similar throughout other parts of the airport area. So I'm only taking you through this history because, uh, after the land use, uh, update committee recommended to the city council that this particular site be included in the general plan update for, uh, mixed-use residential. And after an EIR was conducted that found no impacts by doing that, and to answer some of Mr. Kettings' questions, uh, that you just asked, the city of Irvine, the Airport Land Use Commission, all of these other stakeholders were involved in that 2014 EIR process. After all of that, the city council of Newport Beach felt that it was appropriate to put residential on this site and certified the EIR and approved the general plan amendment. The voters of the city of Newport Beach, as is their right, uh, did not vote, uh, to approve that particular general plan update. It had a wide variety of land use changes in the city in it. And, uh, we have no reason to believe that any part of that vote was, was site-specific to this site. So we immediately, after the results of that election in 2014, filed the application that's in front of you this evening. When we originally applied, it was a market rate project only for 329 units. And it was based upon the findings in the 2014 EIR that was certified by the city council. So between December of 2014 and as we stand here today, we have continued with your staff, who has been, uh, incredibly helpful in bringing this forward this evening in its current iteration. We've continued to massage the site plan with the complex Sudoku puzzle that's required to meet all of the requirements. The city has affordable housing requirements, so we sat down with staff and we changed the project to be a density bonus, affordable housing providing project. The city, uh, had other requirements like parks that we sat down and rolled up our sleeves and, and debated whether this was an appropriate place to try to put people onto a public park. And we settled on a fee that we believe will help, uh, the city do whatever it is that the city determines in its, is in the best interest of the residents of Newport Beach in other existing parks that, that we all know in today's current economic climate, uh, money and, and public benefit fees are, are deeply needed to do other projects that, uh, otherwise might not get funded at this- to do other projects that otherwise might not get funded at this point. So, to sit down with your staff and be able to put together a resolution that is a win-win-win-win, I could keep going wins ad infinitum, is something I'm very proud of and something your staff should really be thanked for and acknowledged for their contribution to what you see in front of you. The staff report was incredible. I won't belabor any of the specifics unless you have any specific questions. But, the, to be here tonight after seven-plus or, you know, 20 years or whatever number of years you want to take it back to when this project was first discussed as a potential site, is very exciting. It's a huge opportunity for the City of Newport Beach to realize many of its goals. I don't want to get into the terms of the development agreement because it isn't directly germane to the planning issues in front of you, but we believe that we've put forward a plan with city staff that makes the city, again, a winner immediately out of the gate. And we hope that we can put together a project, when we come back to you next, assuming your approval this evening, that you guys will be extremely proud of. And the next time I'm here, after your hopeful approval tonight, I will be thanking you for your participation in bringing this to the next step when we come back with the site development review and come one step closer to actually delivering this project. So, with that, I really thank you for your attention. Again, given everything that's happened in the last 24, 48 hours, two months, it's very inspirational to be here this evening and have all of you taking time away from your family to study these in-depth planning documents, technical studies, all of the work, thousands of hours and design professionals that are bringing this forward to you saying, please give us the chance to try to build something great. And so with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have and hopefully watch you guys approve an affordable housing project in the City of Newport Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Strater. Very good, concise. I must say, written down, I've read quite a few of these addendums for the environmental and supplemental EIRs and I thought this was extremely well-done, well-written, and easy to follow. So tell your team that. What's the timeline on, if this is approved, development plan process to come in? And then take it one step further, Phase 1 construction?
Thank you for the question and I'm remiss for not introducing Sean Matzler from Cox Castle, who's Land Use Council. He's on the Zoom call-in. And Joanne Hadfield from, used to be called Planning Center. My name, the name is escaping me at the moment, someone from staff can help. But, to your point, they produced that document and it is amazing to have such a thorough document. But to answer your question, the next step, as Mr. Campbell just outlined for Commissioner Kleiman, is, once we get through city council approval, we would then have the right, excuse me, I misspoke. We would have the ability to pursue residential development on this site. So the next step would be finding a residential development partner that would come in with Mr. Saunders as the property owner and pursue the drafting of specific site plans and the specific program for the number of units, the specific program for the density bonus. What's in front of you this evening is a minimum. We expect that we will try to exceed that minimum. So to gauge an actual, there's Sean, to gauge an actual guesstimate as to when ground would be broken would be a haphazard guess and I won't do that to you. Best-case scenario, it's not tomorrow, it's not this year, it's not next year. It's going to take some time. But the key is, again, given the complexity of the area, there they both are, those two are responsible for producing the environmental report in front of you. Given the complexity of the area, it takes the knowledge that this development agreement is going to preserve the right to try to get these units approved on this site for somebody to actually put in the amount of time, resources, and money to building that site plan to come back to you. We would not have done this without a development agreement because there's absolutely no way with a two-year or a four-year approval that anybody could possibly guarantee that they're going to get themselves through the rest of the process. So, we have every intention of moving the day after the city council approval and the appeal period runs. But I will be completely upfront and honest with you that there is going to be a little bit of time to build the actual site plan.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners of the applicant? Seeing none, let's open it up to the general public. Our call-in line again is 949-270-8165. Is there still a 40-second delay? Who am I looking on? Okay. Come on. I know.
Chair Kettings?
Yeah, I didn't see you there. Go ahead, Jim?
Members of the Commission, this is Jim Mosher. First, regarding this issue of paying a fee in lieu of actually building the expected park, Deputy Director Campbell referred to the 11 or 12 service areas the city has, which are specified in the recreation element of the general plan. He also showed a slide, though, which is from the airport area section of the land use element. And the last words of that are on handwritten page 36 of the staff report. And they say the annual fee is paid to the city for acquisition, when it's in the airport area, for acquisition improvement of other properties as parkland to serve the airport area. So it's unclear to me if the intent of that is more specific, that the park should be in the airport area, which we were told it would be difficult to acquire the land for, or if it could be in this larger service area that goes all the way down to the back bay. And in either case, I think it's a little naive to think that paying the money into the fund is actually going to result in a park. As to the sequel process, although you might like the document, the fact that we're going through this particular process seems to mean that there has not been a public review question and response opportunity, like there usually is with an EIR. Had there been one, I have some questions about this 65 CNEL line, which features prominently under the planning. I'm first wondering, is that the 65 CNEL from the airport only? Or does it include traffic noise and so forth? And second, as I raised the question of the study session, from a planning perspective, you'd think it should be an actual 65 decibel line. But is it that or some line that has been decreed in the past as a permanent line? Page 32 of the staff report cites a Airport Land Use Compatibility Passage, which says it's a 65 decibel line from 1985 master plan. The actual noise line, which I would think would be important for planning purposes, is obviously moving the last month or two and there's very little airport traffic, it's moved closer to the airport. A year from now, when the million annual passenger cap goes up to 11.8, it will probably be moving out. A few years from then, it'll be probably moving out still further. So, I'm concerned about why a fixed line would be appropriate for planning rather than the actual line and how the project would adjust the changes in the line. And then the second sequel question is, at your last meeting, you heard a presentation about vehicle miles traveled. Nowhere in that presentation did it tell you when that was going into effect. I understand it's July 1st. So this project has apparently escaped the need for that vehicle mile traveled analysis. And I'm wondering if an actual project comes along in a year or two, whether it will trigger the need for it at that time, since it's not been done yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I don't see anyone in the big room coming to the podium. And we have no calls coming in. All right. Applicant, would you like to make any rebuttal or closing comments?
No, thank you, Chair Kettings. Here to answer any questions anybody might have and look forward to your approval this evening. And thank you very much for your time.
I think I asked a question of this last time. That little key property that is not involved in this, right off campus.
Yes.
No chance of making that blend in with this?
That parcel was actually in our application for a period of time. We spoke to every adjacent property owner and offered to include them. We believe it was a, you know, a smart thing to do to holistically look at the entire block. That particular owner, because of the amount of money they had invested in the capital improvements on the site and a plan that they had for something upstairs, notified us, probably a year and a half after they had joined with us in the application, that they wanted to withdraw their participation in the application. They didn't oppose it and obviously they've been notified and they're not here speaking against it. They just did not wish to participate in the overall application. And we conferred with staff and collectively all agreed that it would have been nice to have them, but it was not totally essential to the underlying plan.
Thank you for that answer. Any questions? Yes. I don't need that, I figured it out. Ms., Eric Wagon?
I just wanted to ask the applicant, how long has Mr. Saunders owned this property for? It seems like he's kind of got a lot of stuff up there. So it seems to me like he's going to be around for a long time with this property and a long time in the area. So I think that's a good thing for the city. I just was curious if Mr. Strater knew.
Yeah, great question. And again, Mr. Saunders has been involved in the city planning of the project since prior to 2006. He's owned, there are multiple parcels involved in this. So I want to be sure that I answer your question with specificity and say that each one of the parcels is a different time period of ownership, looking backwards. Looking forwards, the residential Planning Area 1 will likely be joint-ventured with an ongoing ownership interest by Mr. Saunders with a residential development partner. That's not necessary, but it's something that he would prefer. And Planning Area 2 has, as the Commission is no doubt aware, several long-term leases with commercial providers of rental cars in place. As those leases cease, then the plan in front of you has been proffered forward as the next phase for those particular parcels. So Mr. Saunders will not be doing anything in the immediate short term with regard to Planning Area 2 in terms of his ownership. Planning Area 1, there will definitely be a residential developer involved.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Curtis?
In Planning Area 2, what is the longest lease and does that have an option? So just so we can get an understanding of what that timeline was?
Sure. Again, let me preface the answer by saying that if you would have told me when I started this project that Hertz was going to go bankrupt, I wouldn't have believed you. So, to preface the answer with that is to say, we have looked at the leases. Each one of them has a different term. The reason for the term of the development agreement has been structured with the two terms. One, for the residential, because the city wants to make sure that that residential is done as fast as is possible. And we, as the applicant, have agreed to that shorter term on the residential. The longer term for the commercial property in the development agreement was based upon the expiration of the leases in their entirety, including option periods. So without answering specifically, because there are multiple, I'll just let you know that the DA term of 20 years for the commercial is sufficient to allow the in-place leases to turn over and for the site planning to be done, to bring forward the second planning area for additional discretionary approval.
Thank you. I just hope we don't have abandoned buildings over there in Phase 2 while we're waiting.
Looks like Mr. Matzler would like to add a thought there.
Mr. Matzler?
Just very quickly, Commissioner, I have the benefit of looking at my computer while you ask the question. Four of the properties in Planning Area 2 have leases that extend until 2038. And that's why, as Mr. Strater mentioned, the development agreement for Planning Area 2 includes a 20-year term.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no, yes?
Just a couple more questions for the applicant. Can you just briefly give us an overview of what your client is looking at in terms of underwriting the project? And the, I mean, obviously, it depends on when this comes to market, but at the time of underwriting it, at each point in time, I should say, what we're talking about in terms of entry-level price point for both the affordable housing and the remaining units? Just to get an idea.
Thank you for the question. I wish I had a crystal ball in front of me to be able to give you the right answer. So I will give you the wrong answer based upon the facts we have in front of you, in front of us. The way we underwrote this project was by conducting a survey with a consultant of similar product in the similar area and putting together a pro forma that was based upon assumptions. And I will say, this has been a near-impossible target, given what's going on in our economy right now. Any assumption that we made by the day we put it in writing was wrong. As we continue to check the metrics of what's going on with lease absorption and lease rates around Newport Beach and Irvine in the immediate airport area, it's like trying to catch a falling knife. The rates and the absorption falls, you know, precipitously each month. However, we all know and hope and pray that that's obviously not a permanent factor. So, we have done our best to try to build a flexible, a conservative pro forma model based upon the surrounding projects. And so the best thing I can say to answer your question, which is a very good question, is that what you're seeing at projects like Uptown Newport and other similar projects, say in the IBC, those would be the similar price points and hopefully the similar types of finish level and design and very similar in projects' scope.
Thank you. My only other question is about soils testing. I'm just curious when the last time that was performed. I know that the airport has done some undergrounding of their fuel facilities and storage. So, just curious if that showed up at all or when the last time they've looked at that was?
I think that's directed at me. I'm going to need to phone a friend to either Sean or Joanne, who have the benefit of technical studies. I'm looking to see if anybody has that specific answer or anybody off of staff.
Commissioner, there would be, and I think Joanne will look to see if that's addressed in the addendum, but there would be soil studies performed in connection with any future application for residential development. Because this was a legislative approval, we did not conduct soils tests in connection with our application.
Joanne, you're on mute.
Zoom, zoom. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that. The EIR addendum looks at, besides that it's still fairly problematic, it looks at the incremental impacts of the project compared to the projects in the two previous EIRs for which it's an addendum. So, it doesn't, it looks at the findings of the previous EIRs and whether this would create new impacts. And then it details the regulatory improvements, or the regulatory compliance that's required going forward. So, it doesn't, because overall, the intensity of development is reduced compared to both the 2006 general plan EIR and the 2014 amendment, it doesn't get into the detail of subsequent geotechnical studies. And again, like Sean said, those would be required. So, it's not site-specific in terms of a Phase One example, but it details the regulatory requirements for going forward.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, I'm looking for a motion, and a recommended action is on your agenda. And if somebody is willing to proceed on for an approval, we have two items. Staff on my right?
Chair, I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the items before us. Obviously, I would have loved to have had this concurrent with our general plan update, but I don't think that it deviates much from the existing update. And I do think, as we've discussed ad nauseam, we have a need to somehow begin to address these RENA numbers. So, I will support this.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, and that is, for both items, finding that the potential environmental impacts have been previously mitigated through implementation of the policy of the general plan, 2006. And I'm just paraphrasing again, and adopt resolution PC 2020-020 recommending that the City Council adopt an environmental impact report addendum ER 2028-002, and approval of general plan amendment, et cetera, planning committee, and the rest of that long paragraph. Everybody okay with that? Let's vote, please. Are we doing by hand, or do we have electronic? Go ahead. What, electronically?
The motion carries unanimously.
So, that's a win-win-win-win-win-win-win. Seven, six wins. Not bad. All right. Congratulations. Proceed on. Where are we here? That's it. Staff Commissioner, items. Motion for reconsideration? Item five. Hearing seeing none, move on. Report by Community Development Director.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and give that report this evening. First, I want to announce that the City Council on May 26 adopted an emergency ordinance providing a process within which we can issue what we call emergency temporary use permits under the authority of the Community Development Director. What the purpose of this is, is to allow a temporary expansion of restaurants or maybe some other retail establishments if they need certain facilities so that they can provide additional distancing on outdoor patios so that they can reopen and provide social distancing. We've done close to 15 of them by now, I think. We started hitting around, ground running. We had a website up and an application up, and the restaurants are definitely appreciative that we're able to review these things electronically and actually send them off for their concurrence and signature electronically using DocuSign. Anyway, but that is something that the Council provided and we're moving forward with. Again, they're temporary expansions, so you may see a possible street closure, patio dining, kind of retail on the sidewalk. We could use parking spaces. It provides a pretty broad authority to waive permit requirements in municipal code to get these restaurants and other retail businesses up and running. Kind of a shot of adrenaline to the economy, if you will. So, that's ongoing. I also want to just go over the upcoming agendas for you. The next agenda, we've got four items. Fire Station Two, the car wash on Jamboree is coming back finally, some coat cleanup items, and then we've got Baja Sharkey's coming in for a remodel, so that's on June 18. In July, we've got three, actually have four items, residential development standards. Hoag is asking for a development agreement extension for a year due to COVID-19, and we're going to be making some changes to the industrial zone. The other fourth item that's not on the agenda that you've got, the tentative agenda here, is the appointment of commission officers, the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. That comes at the first meeting of July annually. And with that, that concludes my report.
What is it with the car wash on Jamboree?
Yes, the Planning Commission saw a general plan amendment, a variance, and a CUP for an automated car wash at 1600 Jamboree. I think that's the Shell Station right there at Jamboree and San Joaquin Hills Road.
Okay. We saw that once before, a year and a half ago, maybe.
Yeah, we saw that a long time ago, and the applicant is working to resolve some issues that were identified at that meeting, and it's finally back.
Are they meeting with the neighbors who showed up? Big Canyon?
I'll double-check on that. We can provide a report at the meeting.
Very good.
Chair, quick question for staff, if I can.
You may. Commissioner Kleiman?
I'm just curious what the kind of legal analysis is on our general plan update, taking into consideration these very high RENA numbers and our green light initiative. And, you know, if we get all the way down the line of this very involved process and then it fails to be approved by the voters, what's the?
Is that something, we can certainly bring back that as a comprehensive agenda item, if you'd like, in some upcoming months during the summer.
Sure. Also, are we doing elections, or is that next meeting and?
The selection of officers for the Commission?
Yeah, or was that, was everything delayed in terms of accepting new applications for all of the boards and commissions?
No, that process is ongoing. In fact, the first stage of that process is the City Council next Tuesday night, and we'll have appointments here in June. We'll get the, if there's a new Commissioner, we'll get them sworn in, but the City Council would, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission would be electing officers in July.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, would you like anything on a future agenda? Hearing none. Request for, excuse absences? Everybody going to be here for a while? I guess. Can't go anywhere. That is it. Adjournment. Way before 8:30.